Is that one working? Oh, wait, wait, hello? Now it is.
We will call the Planning Commission meeting to order. First, I'd like to stand, say the Pledge of Allegiance, and have a prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
And before I offer up a prayer, I would like to have a moment of silence for Fred Tricker, who passed away last month after our Planning Commission meeting. He was a good friend and a longtime Planning Commissioner, so let's honor him in a moment of silence. Thank you. Dear God, we come before you today humbly asking for your guidance and grace. We pray that you would instill unity among the members of our community. Help us to remember that we are all called to love and support one another. Inspire us to set aside our differences and come together in harmony, working towards a common purpose. Strengthen the bonds of friendship and fellowship among us, so that we may be a shining example of your love to those around us. Fill our hearts with compassion and understanding, that we may seek reconciliation and forgiveness when conflicts arise. May your Holy Spirit guide us in promoting peace and unity, so that together we may serve you. In your name, amen. All right, we will continue the minutes from the last meeting to the next meeting. We will approve them at the December meeting. Anyone have any changes, additions to the agenda? Any Commissioners like to add anything or have any comments? If not, we will move to our first legislative item. Mr. Schoen, would you like to introduce that?
Good evening. Stephen Schoen with the Planning Department. The first item is the Revest Small-Scale Future Land Use Map Amendment with rezoning. This request is to approve by ordinance. It was reviewed by Ms. Ayanna Reed, who is not with us tonight. Kelly Schultz will be presenting for you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kelly Schultz. I'm with the Planning Department. Last name is spelled S-C-H-U-L-T-Z. Again, this is the Revest SSA with rezoning. It's project number FLU 25000027. Ms. Reed did review this request. It's a future land use with rezoning application submitted by Dunlap and Shipman PA. On behalf of Matthew Revest, requesting to change the future land use category from rural residential to general commercial or lesser category, and to change the zoning district from rural village to general commercial or lesser district on 58-plus-or-minus acres. The property is within District 1. It's located at 2909 East State Highway 20, and it's identified by the parcel number in your packet. Would you please enter the staff report and exhibit into the record, please?
Oh, entered.
I really don't have anything to add to you all. All the comments have been resolved as far as the staff reviews. We do have the applicant with us this evening, and I'm sure can answer more specific questions than I'd be able to, since I didn't physically review the project. But if you do have questions, I'll be glad to try to answer them for you.
Any questions for staff?
Got you.
Okay, we reserve the right to call you back.
Thank you.
All right.
All right, good afternoon, Commissioners. My name's Robert Kaufman. I'm an attorney with Dunlap and Shipman, K-A-U-F-F-M-A-N. Here with me tonight is Melissa Ward, Certified Planner with Dunlap and Shipman, and Matt Parker on behalf of the applicant. As you just heard, this is a future land use amendment with rezoning application, plus or minus 58 acres off of, on the north side of Highway 20. It's a request for a change from rural residential to general commercial future land use, and from rural village to general commercial zoning. You'll hear in more detail from Ms. Ward in just a minute how the proposal is compatible with both the use of the adjacent properties and the objectives of the comprehensive plan. You know, this isn't, of course, the stage talk about development. We're not here on a development order. The development will need to be reviewed for compliance with the Land Development Code at that stage. But we are going to show you nevertheless, because it's an understandable question, some of the development concept, including the clustering of the intended commercial development in certain sections to protect the wetlands that are on site, with that clustering of the commercial development being contemplated specifically in the Walton County Comprehensive Plan. And as I mentioned, the development's consistent with the trends already established by the future land use and zoning districts in this area of Highway 20. It's, of course, a large arterial roadway with increasing commercial development in that area. And in fact, the, about half of the development site we're talking about tonight, just on the other side of it, to the south side of 20, is currently future land use of industrial and extractive uses, a more intense development category than the request for the amendment tonight. And briefly, I know lawyers like talking about statutes more than anyone who's not a lawyer, but I am going to take just a minute to kind of maybe center the view here tonight on a couple sections in the Community Planning Act. That's Chapter 163 of the Florida Statutes. And looking at the definition of compatibility from 163-3164. Compatibility means a condition in which land uses or conditions can coexist in relative proximity to each other in a stable fashion over time, such that no use or condition is unduly negatively impacted directly or indirectly by another use or condition. And what you're going to hear tonight, and Ms. Ward's going to show you in just a minute, is that this proposed amendment, it's not just for uses that can coexist, but actually will enhance and complement the existing development of the immediately surrounding area in the Highway 20 corridor. Also want to look at, from the same Community Planning Act in subsection .3161, one of the statements, and this is in the Intent and Purpose section, where the legislature's defining the intent and the purposes of this chapter of the statutes. Further, it's the intent of this part to encourage economic diversification, workforce development, and community planning. And the proposed amendment here is implementing exactly those objectives of economic diversification and workforce development. So that is consistent as well with the Planning Staff's findings. You know, reading from the staff report, and I'll quote, "Staff believe the proposed amendment is compatible and consistent with the comprehensive plan and the Land Development Code." We agree with that, of course, and I'll ask Ms. Ward now to come up and explain that in detail, and she'll be available to answer any questions you may have. We also have a packet that I will hand out right now, and would ask that be admitted as applicant's Exhibit 1, please.
You're handing it to them? Okay. Because if you're handing it to me and expect me to consider that as part of my deliberation, then we're going to have to postpone this, because I can't read that tonight.
Well, I'll hand it out, and if you choose to read it tonight, we'll get it. This Ward will be referring to it, so she can direct you to the section that we're up.
Excuse me, the information you're handing out now, is that in the document that was on the website?
Some of it is, yes.
But why are we getting more information every time your company comes here?
So, the direct answer to that is that in order for us to, is this one on? In order for us, there we go. In order for us to ensure that we establish the record going forward, it's for the documentation and the record that we turned in evidence that in the event that we have to appeal anything, we can refer back to the documents we submitted into evidence.
Okay, then I'd like it read into the record that the Commission has had no time to look at any of the information that you're providing. Therefore, the fact that you put it in the record is meaningless to the way we rule. Thank you.
So my name is Melissa Ward. I am a Certified Planner with the American Planning Association and a employee of Dunlap and Shipman. Dunlap and Shipman was hired by the applicants for the Waterside Land Holdings for the rezoning of 58.69 acres from a rural residential to commercial, and a rezoning from rural village to general commercial. The first thing I'd like to do is I'm going to show you a map. I'm going to set it in front of the podium, because putting it up on the stand blocks the view of the court reporter. So one moment, please. To give you some history of the site, just a little bit, to make it clear what we're talking about. This same property, at one time, a couple of years ago, was proposed for a 66-lot subdivision under the density of rural village. The proposal failed due to the impacts, the impact fees and other infrastructure improvements that would be necessary to develop that 66-lot subdivision. The applicant, it's on their own decision, decided that was too costly for the low density of that development. Later, as recently as last year, Walton County looked at the same piece of property in consideration for a waste transfer station, and that did not go through. So just, they had, the BCC voted to check into the property for that purpose. This proposal has around it, a recently, as confirmed by the city of Freeport, was confirmed as having recently approved this car property amendment, which includes, which is in your packet, and which was, let me clarify, it was in the staff report and the compatibility analysis, which includes heavy or high-density development, traditional density development, commercial. It's a mixed-use development that covers an extensive landmass. To make it clear, our property that we're talking about tonight, I want to make sure I'm on the record, is this red block at 58.69 acres. It fronts on Highway 20. The car property is this lovely colored piece that goes south of 20 all the way down to what looks like, it goes down past 3280 and up and into the property north here. And this property is also car property, which is also mentioned in that same staff report that you received already. It was on the website. The point of that is that, in this, is clear by this evidence that the surrounding area is developing, and will be developing for some time now, into a mixed-use development, including residential, mostly residential, and some commercial. The property, I'm going to turn this slide. The property surrounding this site is already developing in light industrial uses, and in some cases, a rezoning. This was rezoned. The metalworks are here. We have landscaping businesses and other things over here that are all south of 20, but this is Black Creek Boulevard, right? So this area is already developing commercially, and all around it is the car property to be developed as a mixed-use, heavy on the residential, and with some manufacture, some commercial components, and corporate warehousing in the far north end. So what are we talking about? The development proposal is not to include any residential component whatsoever. It is to create a commerce park that allows for businesses to come in and create that business and be close to Freeport 331, right on Highway 20, and have the infrastructure they need to distribute if they have to go to north to I-10 or go east and west on 20, and to allow businesses to be able to operate in that community and provide services to the incoming residential car property developments, as well as servicing the Freeport community and the Black Creek community. We know that you guys have already approved a lovely development on 3280 that includes, some of it is mixed-use, and it includes a lot of residential from the Jay Odom Project, I think it's Nature Walk or Nature Trail out there. And then in Freeport, a significant growth, Freeport itself has grown no less than 5% every year in residential growth, but probably, I do believe it's less than 2% on commercial growth. So they're not keeping a sustainable level of growth. The people that are coming here are going to need jobs, and this is about job creation and creating an economic stability for the community. So the proposal... Did you have better eyesight? Sorry. This is a conceptual plan. This is not a development order phase, but we wanted to show you what we're talking about, because one of the things that you see here is all of this green. There is wetlands on this property. It also has some flood zone. And so they're maintaining a small pod of commercial right here that comes off of 20, and then the improvement of a public right-of-way that connects Black Creek up into the car property, and then access here for some commercial buildings, and then some commercial buildings over here.
Excuse me.
Yes.
What, the area that's in captured, that you guys are circling, well, surrounding in white? What is that property?
There are three lots there that are not owned on the, that are not a part of this application. They are owned by different individuals.
Are they developed in any way? Homes, farms, anything?
Not farms. I do believe there's a house on one of the properties. We actually have a, I'll have to look and see where it is. I was going to submit that in a minute, but one of the property owners is in agreement in favor of the application, because he wanted to develop his property commercially, so we are... I'll have to ask Megan if she can tell me where that's at. I'm sorry? Oh, Tab 14. But I will be happy to take it out and submit it into evidence individually, if that is sufficient. Specifically, and I don't mind reading it into the record, is from a Mr. David Dye. And he states, "To whom it may concern, I am the owner of one and a half-acre parcel," and he gives the parcel ID number. "My property is adjacent to the Revest property proposing the rezoning from rural village to general commercial. Due to the location of the property being east of downtown Freeport and on Highway 20, I feel that the location is great for future commercial development, considering the city's growth and approval of large master plan with commercial, medical, high-density residential, and also looking at the current commercial development east of Freeport, including metal macks, landscape nursery, and a heavy construction office all near my property. I look forward to the forward commercial and business growth in the area, helping to provide jobs and services to our local economy. I fully support the request." Respectfully, David Dye." That's the last page in there.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So if you're familiar with the zoning districts, you might ask yourself, like, what's wrong with rural village in respect to this location? To have a commercial, a commercial use in the rural village, it is a conditional requirement that it is in a particular location. One of those conditions, however, is that the buildings and the uses have to be much smaller than what you would normally use in general commercial. It is not conducive to some of the uses that you would allow for general commercial, which include things like having neighborhood commercial, serving commercial opportunities in one location. So the purpose is to have a bigger size parcel that you could cut out and sell for commercial purposes for somebody to develop, or bigger units on that commercial property. The buildings for rural village cannot exceed 12,000 square feet, and so you would, your development sites would have to be a mass of small individual units that would not serve as some of the uses that would be in the area. Because they do not wish to develop any residential, we just wanted to be clear that this is not general commercial under the zoning district, does allow for some residential use. They are not proposing it, and they will be not advertising for that. It's important to note that the capacity, when you look at a land use amendment, you look at the maximum potential for that property under the new zoning district. So when you change it from rural village to general commercial, that maximization creates approximately over 2 million square feet of commercial that we would never be able to develop. And the more realistic development on that site is right around... I'm sorry, I got to open it up on my tablet, and it just went asleep. It's right around 272,000 square feet of commercial. It seems like a lot, but it is one-fourth, if not less, than what the allowed general commercial would allow. And rural village today, at a maximum, commercial capacity would be 1.5 million square feet of commercial. Again, you would never be able to build that there because of the extensive wetlands. You couldn't impact the wetlands. If you impact the wetlands, you have a reduction of your intensity to 10%. So there's a lot of things in here that we are asking for that are really relatable if you're looking at the proposed realistic max, which is 271,814 square feet, give or take. This is, the numbers based on what the site plan kind of gives off. So the request is, when we do a consistency analysis, we look at all the reasons that you would want this changed. And what we can tell you is that, and it is in the staff report, because it's attached as my consistency analysis, is that there are a large number of comprehensive plan policies and objectives that say you need to be, Walton County, looking at growth and how you're going to sustain the community that moves here. We have been growing. I would like to add to that, that our recent DPZ study predicted this area for growth, to continue what is happening in Freeport and to support what's happening in Black Creek community. And I'm happy to answer any other questions. I just wanted to make sure that we're covering all the bases, that we're on the same page. I mean, if you have any questions of me, I'm happy to answer them. This amendment request is consistent with the Land Development Code and Comp Plan and should be approved, because it is consistent with what is developing in the community, both in Freeport and beyond. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'd also like to clarify with regard to the information we've handed you. Tab 1 is a copy of the agenda. Tabs 2 through 7 were submitted in the portal. We have a copy of the staff report, which of course agrees that this proposed amendment is consistent and compliant with the objectives of the comprehensive plan. So we rely on the staff report as evidence for our application, because it is consistent with the testimony you just heard from Ms. Ward. Number 3 is the concurrency analysis, which was also submitted in advance. Tab 4 is the application, which of course was submitted in advance. Tab 5 is the boundary and topographic survey. And tab 6 is the traffic and impact, or excuse me, the traffic impact analysis study. 7, the environmental study, all previously submitted. The remaining tabs of your notebook are relevant sections of the Land Development Code and the Walton County Comprehensive Plan, the letter of support that Ms. Ward just presented to you, and one court case, which governs the general standard for use of this nature. So all the evidentiary materials that are in this packet were previously submitted, with the exception of the letter of support, which is dated yesterday. And it wasn't clear if those were accepted into the record. I would ask that it be admitted as one exhibit, or if you would prefer, I can move each individual exhibit into evidence.
As a group is fine.
Thank you so much.
We will admit that. Thank you. All right.
Okay.
Well, we may have further questions for you, but right now, we'll open this up for public comment. Anyone, excuse me, anyone wishing to make comment on the Revest, Revist Small-Scale Amendment with rezoning, please come to the microphone. Seeing none, we will close the public comment. Commissioners, comments?
I have a couple of questions for staff. It was mentioned that this, this area is being developed, and it looks, from what I've seen, that you're, that there is a lot of rezoning and things. Is there a county plan for this, or is this just going spot zone by spot zone?
There are no official adopted county plans that speak to growth in this area. There are some components of previously created plans. In the 331 Economic Corridor Study, this area in particular, and another one was kind of outlined as a, as a, not a growth area, but a potential, and I can't remember the actual name of it, but it was essentially a little bit of area that could see that sort of commercial and mixed-use sort of development patterns there. This, this area, Black Creek, and this sort of region of the county, and then the Wood Lawn was, was the other one, that, that kind of had that, that name or identifier, and I just can't think of it for the life of me. Ms. Ward was correct as well in the DPZ report. This was also an area deemed to be a growth area. We've had some fairly large mixed-use and residential developments that have been approved in this, this sort of corridor, this part of 20. Sewer is being extended, if I'm not mistaken. There's a developer's agreement between a developer and the city of Freeport to get services out there. So, so yeah, it looks, for all intents and purposes, that this area will be going in that direction.
But, but we've had discussions in previous cases about how county doesn't control that highway. We can only make requests for the state, I believe.
That's correct. Absolutely.
And, and there's a lot of traffic on 20, as I witnessed coming here tonight. So, so we're now adding more without any clear direction, and I'm, I'm a bit concerned about what's happening along Route 20.
Well, and, and, I mean, it's, that's a valid concern. It's a, it's a two-lane road. I do believe, and maybe the applicant can speak to this more intelligently than I, but there are plans to widen 20 in the future. I, I don't know where they're at in that process, but I do believe there are some efforts heading in that direction by FDOT and other folks that are in that business.
Okay. And as I went into the zoning map and zoomed out from what's shown in the presentation, it did seem like there wasn't too much of this in the immediate area, or in the slightly larger area. So it does seem like it would be sort of standing alone in terms of zoning, not to mention the three properties that's surrounding. One of, one owner in favor of this, but the other two seem to be silent at this point.
Yeah, in terms of color on a map, yeah, it's, it is something that, that may stand out to you. That by itself, to me, doesn't make it inappropriate. The applicant is right. That area is growing. Freeport's growing. There will be a need for these ancillary sort of uses and services in the community that should be taken, be considered in any decision, I think.
What is the exact distance to 331?
I do not know.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Director.
Any other questions for us? Not at this time. Any other questions? Do you have any questions?
No questions.
I don't have questions.
Okay. All right, do we have a motion from the Commission? I, I will say, in the staff report, I have not had opportunity to look at this to see if it complies with the packet that we got, but it did say that traffic was going to be adversely impacted. And, you know, I moved into my house in South Walton five years ago, and there were supposed to be three roads.
You know, Nellie was supposed to go through. There's supposed to be a stoplight at Church Road, blah, 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 blah. And that was all supposed to be done within a couple of years. Here we are, five years later, it's still not done.
I find the impact to be of concern. And, um, the traffic report is also of concern. And I think that rural village is a very appropriate zoning category for this particular parcel. And I do believe that they can still do some, not to the extent, but the amount of density increase is very concerning along with what will happen to the roadways and that three thirty-one, twenty intersection is, is a literal nightmare. And the traffic report, the amount of traffic this was going to add was, is very concerning to me. I'm finding this one hard. And I understand because I, I understand that there's growth and I, I don't know. I don't, I think rural village has a very um, important component, and I think DPZ has outlined it quite well, and I think this is a really appropriate place for it also. I don't know, that's my, and there's a lot of, I don't know, there's a lot of residential around. I don't know if this is appropriate.
Well, my concern is, and this is not specific to this parcel, this is specific to Walton County in general. Things are progressing a lot faster than the infrastructure is supporting. And there's no sewer there. Um, you're not asking for development order, I get it. But sewer has to be extended. The roads are inadequate. I'm, you know, I have some concerns about that as well. So do we have a motion from the commission?
I think for further discussion, the, the, the traffic generated by the proposed land use versus the potential traffic that could be generated by rural village i- is comparable. Um, not, maybe not exactly the same, but it's comparable. And it's also a matter of putting that traffic. In other words, if we continue to do residential development on Highway twenty, where do they go for their commercial needs? They have to travel further.
You can still do commercial needs in rural village. You just can't do it as big. And I think, I think that that's very appropriate to have if the fact that it's surrounded by residential, rural village makes sense. We have smaller businesses that can service that residential. This seems to me to be this huge commercial, I don't, I don't understand the benefit to the people in that area. That's my.
There's a real need for trades, um, for, for a place for trades to work.
Gigantic places to do it. They, they can do twelve thousand square foot, twelve thousand square feet is quite a decent size location, and that's each individual one. They can do multiple. That's a big business.
Making a point.
I understand.
Well, you'd said that it would be about the same, but on, on page thirty-one of the hundred and twenty-eight, it says the proposed future land use would be more than double the current. That seems, seems, uh, notable.
May we address a couple of the issues that y'all raised? And I'll ask Ms. Ward to come up with the details, but with the, the traffic impact analysis, the theoretical maximum is quite high, and I'm going to ask Ms. Ward to, to drill in on the details of that. What I want to point out, and I believe this was some of Commissioner Burgess's comment, is that the theoretical maximum is not at all the practical or the desired, uh, development of this particular site. Uh, you have about forty-some-odd percent wetlands, it's over twenty acres, which off the top cannot be developed, which is being included in that theoretical maximum. The theoretical maximum is also based off both residential and commercial uses with the residential containing a much higher traffic count. Now, the existing rural village is two, two units to the acre density, potentially seventeen units to the acre, um, in general commercial, which is, is quite a, quite an increase, of course. Um, we, we are not, the applicant's plan is not to include any residential whatsoever. When you take out the wetlands, you take out the residential component, which is never going to be a part of the development here. What you're looking at is about an eighty to ninety percent decrease versus that theoretical maximum when you look at the traffic impact statement.
I totally understand that, but this parcel was already slated to be residential at one point in time. So there is no guarantee that we give you this rezoning, that this doesn't ever come to fruition. And the next thing you know, it's back on the market for, um, and now we've just approved it for seventeen units per acre.
I understand the concern, and I do want Ms. Ward to address that though in a little bit more discreet detail. But is this the car property?
That one is.
I'll, I'll sit down in, in a minute so she can talk about the traffic, but I did want to talk out.
Turn it this way.
Oh, yeah. Thank you. Yeah, that, that orient to the north here.
This is a proposed roadway for the car property that comes up, crosses over twenty and goes further up in, and then connects back to three thirty-one as a bypass to the twenty intersection.
Well, let's, let's orient. The, the red, as you can see, I believe is the subject parcel, Highway twenty, shooting north.
The property that we are, um, proposing to develop would connect with a roadway that would be proposed, working out the details with the car property that would then connect it to this roadway as a bypass as well from Black Creek, Black Creek here, here, sorry. In addition to that, I would just like to say that, um, Mr. Shawan addressed your comment about whether or not there was a proposal. So, um, a few years ago, there was a three thirty-one study plan that included the twenty corridor. This area specifically from Freeport out even past this is designated for that. And just really quickly, just to make sure that we're in alignment, so that you guys understand what I'm saying, it specifically mentions to attract and retain a robust and diverse business environment consistent with the overall corridor that targets high-wage innovative industries, incentivizes new and relocated businesses, and creates identified, uh, activity centers. So what we're talking about is not simply neighborhood commercial uses, which is the only thing that's allowed in rural village. And I understand your point, but you still have to have a substantial commercial base in order to have businesses that create those jobs. It's nice to have Starbucks, but you can't, you can't only have Starbucks. You have to have that sustainable industry that has other things, including professional offices. And in turn with that, other businesses that have needs for a small amount of storage space. People who are building things and creating things also have to have those uses, and they need more than twelve thousand square feet.
And with all due respect, and you know, I think very highly of you, but I really would like to have seen this person purchase commercial real estate for that commercial use. That's the part that I'm really struggling with. They can still do, uh, we have stuff.
Bring up a good point, but I'd like to, I'd, um, clarify for you that the amount of commercial land that is available in Walton County is minimal and certainly very little as you move north of the bay. So we, no matter where they purchase, they're going to end up having to convert it to a commercial zoning. That is true, and we can get that analysis, but I'm just letting you know that's the case with this. This is, the reason this request is, um, is significant is that when you look at whether or not you have an allocated use across the, the development of Walton County. For instance, if you were looking for a residential use and you wanted to put in a hundred homes or a hundred and sixteen, as rural village would allow, you'd look for property that's already zoned, so you don't have to do that. There are very little parcels that are zoned general commercial that are not small pods, small pieces. This was zoned rural village simply because at the time that the maps were, um, put into place, that it was at an intersection of twenty and Black Creek, meant to be a small commercial node when there was nothing out there. We've grown five percent, uh, at least, and Freeport has grown exponentially. They, their residential communities have outmatched their commercial capabilities. Businesses need a place to go. Uh, so I did want to say too, on the traffic study, that he, again, this is what I was saying earlier. This traffic study is based on the maximums allowed on all the possible intensities. This site, having the conditions that it does, will never be an affordable housing site, and that's the seventeen units to the acre. You can't do seventeen units to the acre without doing twenty percent affordable housing. They're not doing that. And because it's fifty percent wetlands, it can't be maximum commercially. Plus twenty acres of wetlands, correct. It'll only come about to two hundred and seventy, two hundred and seventy-one thousand square feet of commercial.
And, and given the, the concerns I'm hearing, I did want to ask, uh, Mr. Parker on behalf of the applicant to come up and, and speak to the development intent of this parcel if the application was granted.
Thank you. Uh, my name's Matthew Parker. Um, I'm a civil engineer in the area. Been doing business in Walton County for about twenty-five years. Um, I'm also a partner in this project as the developer. Um, we're going to be doing, uh, commercial development. If it's under, uh, the current zoning or the future, we're gonna um, be able to attain the maximum square footage that we want to build here. We have no intent at all to do any residential. As a matter of fact, the reason that we wouldn't is because there's about what, five apartment complexes, very in from two hundred and fifty units to three hundred units. There's master plan, uh, communities, um, the Bluffs at Lafayette and Owl's Head. And so what we feel and what we know to be, my office is in Freeport, I drive it every day, is that, um, people from Freeport are driving, getting on the roads, driving south for their services. Um, we need commercial services in the city of Freeport, and that's what we're trying to deliver. The only reason that we're asking for the zoning change is two reasons. One, so that we can have varied, um, building types, so that we can help to create a sense of place there. If you have every building, we're going to have to maximize the building if we stay at the current zoning. That means every building's going to be twelve thousand square feet. They're going to look very similar, and it'll be, um, a very boring place. And we want to create, um, that sense of place using architectural, um, features and different differences in the building. Being civil engineer and being local, um, my whole life, we have a sense of responsibility, um, to the area. And so we're, um, planning on extending that road up to provide additional transportation, um, options for properties that we don't own and don't have anything to do with. We wouldn't really have to do that. We could just come in and service our facility. But what we want to do is extend up and connect to the car property so that they have diversification of traffic. Um, we also have plans to include, include, I'm sorry, improve the Black Creek Boulevard intersection with eastbound and westbound, uh, right-hand turn lane and left-hand turn lane, which will dramatically improve the safety at that intersection. We have a vested interest in doing that. And we have that responsibility, um, to the area.
So what do you envision here? I know this isn't a D O, I get it. I'm just trying, we're just talking about these broad brush strokes of this commercial need that is so desperate. I, I would like some elaboration if possible.
Well, we'd like to bring a mix of uses. So there is a significant use that is allowed in commercial that's not allowed in rural village. That's technology, technological businesses. So we'd like to bring some, some technological businesses that may or may not be related to the military, being, uh, proximity over to the Navy Base and also Eglin. I think we have the opportunity to attract those type of businesses that we would not have otherwise as we're currently zoned. We want to also have some, um, trades so that they're not having to live in Alabama and have an office elsewhere, which means that we have to have some significant storage areas within those buildings. You know, plumbers, um, countertop guys, that sort of thing that is supporting the other type of growth that we're seeing. So, but primarily, we want to provide services to the homes, um, that have already been approved. And we felt like with the heavy industrial on the south being at an intersection that we can improve the safety on. Um, having an alternate, um, transportation access point um, up thirty-two eighty and Black Creek along with Highway twenty, that this would be the opportunity to do it. The other thing that I, I think is really unique about this property and good is that we have enough frontage to have, um, a presence there. But the buildings aren't going to be pushed up against Highway twenty. There's a big wetland between us and the road. So they'll know we're there, but for the traveling public, it will still be visually appealing, even if we have a little bit larger buildings. And so again, if we can do this type of development at this location with those type of, um, property attributes, I think it's great for the area. Um, you know, those people in Hammock Bay are driving a long ways for the services that they need. And so I think in the broader regional transportation impact, we'll really be helping, helping that so that, um, we reduce the traveling distance for, uh, the residents of the surrounding area. And so that's our vision for the property. But primarily, it, we can do what we want to do now, except there's, it limits the uses. Sure, that's simple. Limits the uses, limits, limits our ability to create architectural interest and create that sense of place. And that's what we really want to do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. And, and I do want to also just center on, you know, the standard here, although this is legislative, it's considered a fairly debatable standard. Um, decisions can't be arbitrary. They have to be based on the evidence presented. And I would suggest to you, the evidence we've heard tonight is first off, you have your planning staff, uh, which finds that this is consistent with the purposes and objectives of the comprehensive plan. You have certified land planner, Ms. Ward, who's testified to essentially the same thing. You have the only comment from the public being a letter of support. And in fact, you have no letters of opposition from the public, which I would suggest actually speaks volumes, um, with regards to the local area and what the input from the local folks is. Um, so based on that, I would suggest the evidence, uh, clearly suggests that this would be a suggestion or recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners for approval. Um, and that the comments that, uh, which are certainly fair comments that we've heard from the commissioners have been adequately addressed. Thank you.
Have you spoken to the other two landowners of those?
Well, Mr. Parker, maybe so. I'm not testifying. If you could come up here and, and speak to those other two.
Uh, yes, sir. We have those properties under contract to purchase. They're in support of it. Um, so the two properties to the west are owned by the same gentleman. Um, there's a single-family house on one of them, and they're operating a painting business out of that, um, home. The other property, um, we have a letter of recommendation, uh, from that owner, and we're working with him to get that property under contract as well. So we would like to incorporate that or have a, a separate ancillary. And really, what we wanted to do was connect so that we don't have multiple connections to Highway twenty. Um, and so we have those, I need to be careful. We have two of those lots, I'll say, um, under contract, and then the third, we're working on getting that one under contract, and he's the one that gave us the letter of support. And again, um, the two on the west, they're operating a commercial business now out of that home.
You said that they're owned by the same people?
The two, these two here are.
Yeah, but I'm looking at the, uh, the planning, uh, GIS, um, map right now, and it gives different owners. The Terry Godwin for the one in the middle of the three and a, uh, Diana Henson.
Diane is, uh, Mr. Godwin's daughter. Uh, I'm sorry, wife. So it's the, the same family.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Commissioners, somebody want to make a motion?
I liken this section of Highway twenty, especially with its proximity to the center of Freeport, being very similar to Highway three thirty-one, if you recall. Three thirty-one was full of, uh, rural village and, uh, urban, urban residential development. And with the coming of the population in Freeport and South Walton, it's now recommended to be a commercial corridor. And I, I see Highway twenty kind of following the same suit. Um, I'd like to make a motion to approve, um, the amendment.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any more discussion?
I, I just have concerns about safety and compatibility. Um, a- as I zoom out, I don't see any other properties that are the same color as what we're trying to change to.
But I think what they're saying is that's a matter of time.
Well, then we'll do it one by one. Is that the plan?
It sounds like it.
Okay, spot zone by spot zone.
Right.
Okay.
I, I'm just saying that as they were looking forward down the road in the comprehensive plan and, uh...
Well, we keep running into conflicts. I mean, we've now got an asphalt plant that's not that far from major developments and, and I, I just don't see a pattern of what we're trying to do here.
There is no, it's not cohesive. I get it. All right. We have a motion and we have a second. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye. Three nays, two ayes. All right. Next up is the quasi judicial portion, and we have to have everybody sworn in.
I'll need to recuse myself as I'm the presenter for this, and I will abstain from voting, obviously, as well.
On...
But everything is going to be sworn at one time.
Correct.
So this is, Mr. Shawan, do you have any continuances on this?
Mr. Shawn, do you have any continuances on this? Let's go ahead and take the continuances, then we'll swear, everybody.
Okay.
Okay, the, uh, the first item, the Tucker Bayou PUD, there is a request, there was a request to continue to the December eleventh, uh, Planning Commission meeting.
So we need a motion and a second to continue? Or do we just approve it?
No, we need a motion.
Okay, that's what I thought. Motion to...
I move to continue.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Now we will have those sworn in.
That's all of them, right, Mr. Shawn? Okay. Anyone wishing to speak on the remaining agenda items on tonight's agenda need to be sworn. This is a quasi judicial proceeding that includes the applicant staff, um, any representatives, applicant wished to call, any witnesses to be called, as well as any member of the public wished to make any comments, ask any questions, or otherwise address the board. Please stand, raise your right hand, repeat after me at this time. I do hereby swear or affirm that testimony I present will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Thank you, Madam Chair, staff and the audience are sworn, as is Planning Commissioner Burgess, who is stepping down to present.
Thank you very much. Mr. Shawn.
Yes, thank you, uh, Stephen Shawn with the Planning Department, I have been sworn. Uh, the next item, uh, for, for you all to, to hear is the Nature Walk PUD amendment. Uh, this, uh, is a request to approve by final order. Uh, this application was reviewed by Ayana Reed, who is not with us tonight. Uh, Ms. Kelly Schultz will be, uh, presenting it to you.
Thank you.
Thank you again. Again, this is a request to approve by final order, it is project number M H A two five zero 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 forty-nine. It was reviewed by Ayana Reed. It's a major development order application submitted by Emerald Coast Associates Engineering LLC.
Can I interrupt you?
Yes.
It's a minor development order or a major develop?
It is a major development order.
Okay, the, then the agenda is incorrect, 'cause it says a minor development order.
It does say a minor development order. It was, it was, it was started off as a minor, and it was converted to a major
Okay.
around the time the T R C meeting was conducted.
Okay, I just wanted clarification, 'cause I'm reading along with you, and that was a different word.
'Cause you normally would not see that, so that does need to be corrected in our, um, in our blurb, so thank you for pointing that out. Again, it was submitted by Emerald Coast Associates Engineering LLC on behalf of C H Holdings Incorporated. They're requesting to amend the current P U D on one point three six acres with a future land use designation of mixed use and a zoning district of, of, uh, traditional neighborhood development. The property's in District Five, it's approximately one mile east of County Highway three ninety-five south, and it can be identified by the parcel number in your staff report. If you would please enter the staff report and exhibits into the record.
So entered.
And again, this is amending the P U D, this is not the technical documents for this particular project. It was originally approved for multifamily, and the current owner, developer, wants to develop it as single-family instead of the multi. And so this process is required for them to make that substantial deviation from the approved P U D. The, uh, Technical Review Committee has, uh, recommended approval. Again, at, as it stated in your staff report, that, that point was when it was converted to a, a major development order. There have not been any public comments received to date that I could find in the file. Unless you have questions for me, I'd be glad to turn it over to our applicant.
Any questions for Ms. Schultz? All right, seeing none.
Thank you, Kelly. Uh, Dean Burgess with Emerald Coast Associates, um, we are the engineer of record, and I have been sworn. Um, the, it's a little bit confusing, you're probably wondering why a six, you, six-lot subdivision is a major development order. The, the subdivision is not what we're here for, it's the P U D revision that requires us to come before Planning Commission and Board of County Commissioners. As Kelly indicated, the change that we're asking for is to go from multifamily. These small parcels throughout Nature Walk were designated as multifamily parcels, in my opinion. Uh, they assigned density to them that was completely unachievable. Uh, this particular parcel measures two acres, they had twenty-seven multifamily units thrown at it. The, the developer contacted me and said, we started looking at, what can we do for multifamily? And, um, he said, well, what about just single-family homes? I said, well, that's a good idea, it would probably go over better, you know, with the county staff and the residents within Nature Walk. You know, they're high-end homes, and they probably don't wanna see a, a townhome development within there if they can help it. So that's why we're here, is basically to, to scale this way down, do a six-lot, single-family subdivision. And, uh, we just ask for your support.
Any questions for Mr. Burgess?
Will this be the same H O A as the rest of that development, or, or...
I believe the way Nature Walk works is there's a, a master association, this will have its own sub-association, but they're, they're all under the C D D.
Any other questions?
It refers to a, if I'm not mistaken, a state forest land swap? Am I on the wrong page?
A state forest land swap, not associated with this parcel.
How did I get sw-? Okay, happens to me a lot, so...
That might be the Tucker Bayou.
Yeah.
Okay.
So...
Just one other, one other topic, uh, traffic always seems to come up. Um, obviously, the townhome development, though town, each individual townhome itself generates less traffic than a single-family, going from potential twenty-seven to six, the traffic is cut about a third of what it could be. Happy to an- answer any questions you all may have?
Any other questions?
Oh, there was a topic that came up in, um, uh, T R C. Um, Nature Walk as a whole, the community has one entrance in, one, one entrance or exit out. And they asked if we could do a secondary means of emergency egress in this parcel. Um, I went back to the, the developer, and it does appear that they have negotiated a, a secondary means of egress through this parcel. It will be on the edge here of Lot Two, goes to the north, there's a, uh, into the forestry land, there's a forest road that, uh, nearly abuts this, it would, they would be able to connect to the forestry ru- road and get out to three ninety-five. So, we have a letter that we got just yesterday to that effect, but, um, if this moves forward, we'll be incorporating that into our plans and record it with the plat.
Great.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Uh, we'll open this up for public comment, anyone wishing to, um, comment on the Nature Walk P U D amendment, please come to the microphone. Seeing none, we'll close the public comment. Um, any other comment, questions or comments from the commissioners?
Forward, these are, this is music to my ears.
Yes, we're downgrading the density, looks okay to me.
Extra egress, I love it all.
I entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. Oh, and abstention, that's true. Since you're sitting out there, I completely, uh, didn't go to abstentions, but yes, thank you so much. All right, next item, Mr. Shawn.
Okay, the next item is D W Site Work. Now, this is also a request to approve by final order. Uh, this one has also been reviewed by Ms. Ayana Reed, who is not with us tonight.
That's very convenient of her to work on all these projects and then not be here.
Uh, I, I know, you know, we all have to take a vacation sometime, I suppose. Um, but again, uh, Ms. Kelly Schultz, uh, has so graciously agreed to present it to you all this evening, so...
Thank you so much, Kelly.
Had to look for an excuse to come see you guys.
That's right.
I don't ever get to come anymore. This is project number M H A two five zero 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 four seven. Um, Ms. Reed did do the review on it, it's a major development order application submitted by Jenkins Engineering Incorporated on behalf of D W Site Works LLC, requesting to develop a borrow pit on eleven point eight six acres. The project site has a future land use designation of industrial and extractive uses and a zoning category of heavy industrial. It's located in District Three on the south side of Highway ninety west, east of Rainbow Road, west of Laird Road, and it's identified by the parcel number in your staff report. If you would please enter the staff report into the record.
So entered.
In looking at this project, uh, it does appear that it will have water and sewer availability through the Mossy Head Waterworks system. There, all, all of the outstanding comments have been resolved. I did not see any public comment in the file, and I was gonna, meant to ask Karen prior to the meeting. Karen, did you see anything that was uploaded on your end? Okay, thank you, if you give that a quick look, I, I didn't see anything, and I don't see anything in the staff report, but I would like to just give that extra verification. I think this one's been around for a minute. But, um, I don't have anything else to point out in the staff report, if you have any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer them. Okay, thank you for double-checking on that, so no, no public comments received to date.
Any questions for Ms. Schultz?
Thank you.
Okay, we can hear from the applicant.
Good evening, I'm Scott Jenkins with Jenkins Engineering, J E N K N S, I have been sworn in. Um, you guys may recall this, this actually was before this board, earlier this year, where we actually did the rezoning and the future land use change on this piece of property. Um, this piece of property is located about two thousand feet, probably, from the Walton County, Oaklus County line on the south side of Highway ninety. Um, it is directly next to an older salvage yard that's there now, it's a non-conforming use, but it's been there forever, so I don't think they have any issues. Um, at the time of the rezoning, we changed this to the extractive use category to, to do a borrow pit, basically. So now, we're back for this property to go through the major development order process. Every borrow pit has to go through the major development order process in Walton County. Not exactly sure why, but that is the rule, so here we are. Um, the property itself is located here, Highway ninety is here. You can see there are several other kind of borrow pit areas that's located on the property. So, um, the property is... The property is just under twelve acres. Um, we're utilizing about five of it, um, we are not utilizing, one, one of the conditions to be able to do a borrow pit is that you leave a fifty-foot buffer on all sides as natural vegetation, so we're doing that. And we have to set back a hundred feet from the right-of-way property in the front, which we're doing that. Um, and then there's a, a relatively large slope that runs down here. Staying out of all of that area, because it's just really hard to work in those areas for borrow pits. We're working in the, in the flatter areas. Um, again, we've been through Planning Commission and two board meetings, and really have had no comment from the public and no issues with it. And we're just here to go through the process of the development order, be happy to answer any questions you guys may have.
Any questions from the commissioners?
Have you gotten your D E P permit yet?
Yes, sir, they, they did get a D E P permit for the borrow pit.
Yeah, my only comment is that it is an approved use per the L D C, for the zoning district, and we knew that was what was coming based on the, um, zone, rezoning change. And, I mean, basically, our borrow pit's just a big sandbox.
It, it is, it, it's a hole, you know, basically, and, and it does have a reclamation plan, they will reclaim and replant, and part of that replanting will be re- revegetating everything, they have maximum slopes and benches they can do there. And at the end of the day, it'll be, all be replanted with vegetation and pine trees, basically. So, yes.
So, what's the expected lifetime of this activity as a borrow pit?
I would expect, you know, it's, it's hard to tell, a lot of it depends on the work. This, this owner, this is an independent site work contractor, and he's a land clearer site work guy, he has two trucks, basically, so it's very limited. So I would expect that this borrow pit will probably be in operation for ten years or more, would be my guess.
And then, how long's it take to reclaim these areas? At whose expense?
They, they typically reclaim them kind of as they go, throughout the, so they'll dig apart and reclaim apart and do it as they go. But the re- reclamation period, um, really, they, they can do them in a matter of just a few months, typically. They plant and get everything redone.
Do they refill it with something else then?
They do not, no, so they don't refill it.
So it just becomes a big hole?
It, it starts as a hole and ends as a hole, but it's a vegetated hole, yeah.
Oh, it's already a hole?
Well, no, it'll, it'll be one when they dig it, it's flat now, but once they dig it, it'll be a borrow pit, and then it'll just be vegetated.
And, and what are you taking out of this particular one, sand?
Yes, sir, mostly sand materials.
Red sand, or...
Uh, it, it's a mixture, but it's fairly clean material, again, if you look at the aerial, you can get a pretty good idea. So, all of the cleared areas can be here, or other borrow pit areas, and most of them are sand mines.
Okay, is this sand that can be used down near the, um, near the Gulf, um, and the, the Dune Lakes?
Probably, probably not, unless they go through an additional process, which would be they would have to wash that material, which is more of a mining operation.
Okay.
That's a separate permit, which they do not have currently, and I don't think they plan on applying for. But it could potentially if they went through that process.
And after reclamation, what could this be used for? Does this get rezoned in some way, or what?
No, sir, not, not necessarily, I mean, if somebody wanted to go through the process, which it would be fairly unusual, I think, to dig all the dirt out, then come fill it back in with something else and reuse it, it could be used as any other industrial use. The zoning is, is heavy industrial.
Okay, so it just ends up being left there forever as a wasteland?
Yes, sir, as, as open space, basically, yes.
Any other questions for Mr. Jenkins? All right.
Thank you.
We'll open it up for public comment, anyone from the audience wishing to speak about the D W Site Work project? Please come to the microphone. All right. Don't see anybody rushing to the microphone, so I will close the public comment period. Commissioners, what's your, I would entertain a motion or any other additional comments?
Forward. A motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any, any other comments? Nope, all those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? I have to throw that in there. All right, motion carries. Next item.
Okay, uh, the next item is the Lux Apartments. Uh, this is also a request to approve by final order. Uh, this one, however, was reviewed by Mr. Tim Brown, who is not with us this evening either. Um, and this time, uh, Ms. Roseanna Edwards has, has offered to present to you all.
Thank you.
Thanks for pitch hitting.
Welcome, I'm gonna give Kelly a little break. Um, this is the Lux Apartments, it's a request to approve by final order, it's project number M H A twenty-five dash zero 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 forty, and was reviewed by Tim Brown. This is a major development order application submitted by Jenkins Engineering Incorporated on behalf of J C D C Holdings LLC. They're requesting approval to develop a two hundred and forty-unit apartment complex with clubhouse, pool amenity, public recreational facilities and associated infrastructure on twenty-four point forty-two plus or minus acres. Has a future land use of mixed use and a zoning category of village mixed use. The property is located in District Five, and it's on the north side of U S Highway ninety-eight west and east of Veterans Road and west of Old Blue Mountain Road, and identified by the parcel numbers in your staff report. If you would, please enter the staff report into the record.
So entered.
Thank you, this was, uh, it was approved at the T R C August of this year, October, it went to the Design Review Board where they unanimously approved it with no additional conditions there. Um, one thing I did wanna point out, um, was the public recreational component. Um, that is a trail you'll see on the site plan that spans the perimeter of the property. So the mixed-use component, they're proposing as a trail, and I think there's a picnic area, um, at the road frontage. The only other thing, there are wetlands on the site, nine point five two, um, about nine and a half acres of wetland. The only other thing, there are wetlands on the site, 9.52, about nine and a half acres of wetlands. There is small impact, .13 acres of wetland impacts. And the only other thing I wanted to mention, there are a number of public comments that came in and that are also in your packet.
Yep, saw them.
I will answer any questions or attempt to, if you have any.
Any questions for Ms. Edwards?
You mentioned that there are three uses, the apartments, the trail. Is there a third?
There is the trail, which is the, there is a pool amenity. So there's apartments, clubhouse, pool amenity, and the recreational component, which is the trail.
All right, thank you. We'll hear from the applicant.
Good afternoon, everybody. Jamie Eubanks, E U B A N K S with Jenkins Engineering. I'll just piggyback off of kind of what Roseanna started with and just hit a few of the other points that I wanted to mention. You know, this is 240 apartment units. Roseanna did mention the public recreation that are open to the public. That's being put in at the owner's expense. There's about a third acre park. And I'll mention the park and specifically, this site is gated. However, I wanted to note that all the park has parking spaces that are external to those gates so that the public does not have to enter the facility. They're not denied access. They're allowed to get to that, as well as the trail system. It's about a three-quarter mile trail system, connects to state land on the east and the west. In addition to that, I'll just point out some of the access of the site. We worked with DOT. So this does have a full-length right turn lane into the site, and it is situated, kind of luckily, it's a great piece of property in terms of this area. There is a left turn lane that you may see already in the median of 98. So from an operational standpoint, it works out really well for this particular property. It essentially functions as a left turn out, which not every property on 98 has, of course. The ponds are designed capable to hold up to 100-year storm event. Let's see, anything else I want to touch on real quick? There is a secondary access that is emergency-only ingress egress for life safety. It's gated and oxbucks for the fire department. Beyond that, I think it's, I'll just take any questions that you might have.
I have a couple of questions. First of all, I think the trail around it's cool. I have to absolutely laugh hysterically. I almost fell out of my chair when I was reading this about the bike spaces that are being provided. I mean, I'm a cyclist, but I'm not riding on 98 to get to that, so.
No, it's provided and it's actually a condition of the land development code, so.
I get it. But isn't this, so the county owns property north and west that's eventually going to be developed into a regional stormwater facility and potential amphitheater, blah, 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 blah?
Yes, ma'am, it's in the general vicinity, yes. And there is a right-of-way, this is actually in a right-of-way particular location that the county could develop in the future. You can tell that particular area is substantially wet, so if and when that ever happens.
Right. That's the if and when, yeah.
Correct. Roseanna did mention the wetlands. I mean, this is obviously a site that has a substantial amount of wetlands, over nine, almost 10 acres. We only impacted .13 acres. A good chunk of that is just a little tiny isolated wetland that was down here at the corner, and then just little finger that kind of comes in that we had to impact. So we kept the impacts minimal, clustered everything we could in the uplands. Kept it pretty simple.
And, I mean, I read through all the public comments, and, I mean, I absolutely and positively have to agree that we absolutely have a flood of apartments that have been approved. We have huge vacancies in apartments all around here, but it is an approved land use. And unfortunately, we can't, I mean, I don't feel like we can deny it because it's an approved land use in the land development code, and we can't stop people from developing their property. They're not asking for a rezoning or anything. It's a condition, it's an approved use, so that's my comment.
Understood, and you're right. It is apartments. That seemed to be, just about every public comment did say essentially we have too many apartments.
Yeah, and we do.
And there is a large number of apartments that have come in the last three to five years. I mean, we've all seen it. More coming, much like, you know, the rezoning you were speaking about earlier and some of the arguments. I mean, they're similar. You know, apartments have a smaller price point than, say, a single-family home in South Walton. If you can get people in here, and I'm not here to say these are workforce or forward or anything like that, but if you can get that smaller price point down, you lower trips that may be coming from Freeport or to Funiac or elsewhere, so.
Exactly. So, I don't, I don't know how this works, and maybe this isn't for you to answer, but, you know, I, because of the vacancies in a lot of the apartments in the area, is there potential for these becoming, like, short-term rentals?
There's no intent from the owner in this particular case. I couldn't answer that off the top of my head.
I didn't think so. I just was throwing that out there.
No, understood.
Is the owner going to remain the owner after developing these, or, so he, this owner will run this?
There will be the owner or property management company.
Property management, okay. I do have concerns about right and left turns coming off of 98 because horrendous. And I would actually prefer that it was controlled and it was only right turn exit out of there. Because I see at these, you know, in between these, you end up with three, four, or five cars crowded into the median area, you know, trying to get their turn in, and it's a nightmare. So, that I don't consider to be a plus. Looking at the design, I struggled to figure out how large these apartments were. Whether they were all roughly the same size, one, two, or three-bedroom?
They are. So there's 108 one-bedroom, 108 two-bedroom, and then a sprinkling, I think, 24, or whatever the remainder is, or three-bedroom.
Okay. Because some of what looked like was a walk-in closet was almost as big as the room that it seemed to be associated with, so maybe I'm just reading your diary.
Must have been my wife's closet.
Yes, and my wife would love that closet, but, okay. I'm a little baffled by some of the comments because they talk about this abundance of apartments that are available and not filled, perhaps even. Yet, we also seem to have a shortage of workers because they can't find places to live. I'm not sure if staff can add any insight to that. What is the current situation of housing in the county?
There is a recognized need for housing. I mean, not just in Walton County, but across the state. You know, there is, there have, has been an influx of apartments. I think what we've seen following the number of vacancies is a decrease in the cost of those apartments. That's how they get them filled. I've seen that, just in my own drive through Freeport, those apartments on the north end have, I've seen a departure from their original, you know, rent amount, so. While it's probably not a great thing for apartment developers, it certainly can be for folks that can't afford a $3,000 three-bedroom apartment, so. I think there's some benefit to having a market saturated. It may not make sense for some folks, but I see some positives or some silver lining in there.
And the plans of, this is when having someone from the school committee would actually be welcome here to comment on the plans they might have for any increase, but.
Well, they did comment. It was not, don't look at that, in our packet.
Oh, I missed that and all the duplicate comments.
No, the staff, the school district did comment on it. It showed an additional 20 students being generated, which I always think their multipliers are a little off, but, and I've had conversations with Michelle about that. However, we can't deny or accept based on that, and several of our schools are overcapacity. And it's not up to us to tell the school district that they have to build a new school because we're building all these apartments. They understand that.
It's hard to tell them when they don't show up anyway, so.
Exactly, so.
Well, they are aware.
They are aware and they do review this.
Yes, and there are multiple plans currently at the school district level for new schools in the area, so.
Okay, that's good to know because a lot of those comments came from my neighborhood, so. Okay. And all those New Yorkers will probably be moving down, so.
Any, any other questions for Mr. Eubanks? Yeah, all right, we, all right, thank you. Any, I will open this up for public comment. Anyone from the public wishing to speak on the Lux Apartments, please come to the microphone, state your name and spell your last name. All right. We had a lot of written comments, no personal comments. Yeah, it is a little. All right, we will close the public comment period. Any more questions from the commission? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries. All right, our last agenda item, Mr. Shaw.
Okay. Who's doing this one?
Mr. Baranti's not here.
This, this last item is the Weston Wood Ranch Expansion. This is a request to approve by final order. It was reviewed initially by Mr. Bob Baranti, who is not with us tonight, and again, Ms. Schultz has agreed to present it to you.
Thank you.
Director, could I ask, are we considered that hostile to your staff, or is it the audience that we draw? It's a rhetorical question.
I suspect it so.
This is a request to approve by final order, project number MAJ 2500043. It's a major development order application submitted by Dewberry Engineers Incorporated on behalf of Weston Wood Ranch Incorporated. They're requesting to develop a private congregant care facility on 39.89 acres. The project has a future land use designation and a zoning category of estate residential. The property is in District One. It's located at 4384 and 4390 State Highway 20 West, and it's identified by the parcel numbers in your packet. Would you please enter the staff report and exhibits into the record?
So entered.
This is actually the expansion of an existing facility. It is served by Freeport Water. Sewer is unavailable at this point in time. All staff comments have been resolved. There's a number of conditions of approval suggested, but no comments outstanding. I mentioned that it's an expansion of an existing facility. The original facility was approved by a 2017 development order. It's identified on page five of 14 in your staff report. And then there was an additional development order in 2022 to add an office and a classroom, and then this application is for an additional expansion of the facility. We did not receive any public comments on the project. Unless you have questions for me, I'll be glad to turn it over to Dewberry.
Any questions for Ms. Schultz? All right, thank you.
Good evening. Rudy Moll with Dewberry Engineers. This major development order application is for the Weston Wood expansion. As Kelly mentioned, if you're not familiar with the Weston Wood development, it's quite incredible. So their mission statement is, I'll read it here, it's "Bridging the Transition Gap to Empower Teens and Young Adults with Intellectual and Development Disabilities to Discover Their Potential and Live Independent and Productive Lives." The site plan you see here, the project starts here on an existing gravel road. The current development is accessed through a private roadway that is access to Highway 20. The total property size is around 38 acres. So, the eastern half was the property with parcel number ending in 0040. That was the minor development order that was issued for that property back in 2022, I believe. So this is the expansion, is the western property, I believe that's 0030. And we're combining the total development so that it, we permit it as an entire major development order based off the existing improvements as well. There is no impacts to wetlands. We have a minor secondary wetland impact just due to the outfall of the stormwater structure. The buildings that you see here, they're all going to be living quarters. So we have two eight-unit dorm buildings that you see right here, and then two four-unit dorm buildings. This building you see here is like the multipurpose area building where they'll have private events and use it as an amenity center, gatherings and events, such like that. And so, the, this large building you see here, that's the 16-unit, that's the largest dorm room. It's a one-story building. All these are one-story, by the way. And stormwater for the project is all handled through shallow dry retention, which gets treated and discharged to the wetlands that are located south.
What are those structures to the north?
Oh, yes. So these are the cottages. They're like Katrina cottages. They are detached, unlike the dorms. They provide more of like an individual feel for these people. That's the total number of seven.
Okay. Any questions? All right. Guess there's no questions. Do you have any more comments? Oh, did you have?
Yes.
Yeah, looking at my notes. So, how? How many residents total do you expect? I tried adding them up, but I.
So I believe the count, I should have it here on the site plan. It's going to be the total number of units, and so, let me see here.
Forty-seven.
Forty-seven, okay. Yeah, I don't see that, so I'm trusting your.
Well, eight and eight and four and four, and 16 and seven is 47, so.
Okay, and how many, how many staff or workers do you believe would be there?
So, it'd probably be the same amount of staff that are on-site now. And that number I can't give you exactly. If you need it, I can.
Okay, I was just trying to get a feel for the comings and goings during the day. I assume the residents will not, but will they have the free rein to come and go as they want, or they?
Well, I'll let the owner speak on this behalf because I kind of.
Oh, that'd be great.
Can you state your name and spell your last name?
Lindy Wood, W O O D. As far as the transportation, if you, you probably aren't aware, but like over 99% of individuals with developmental disabilities are non-drivers. So the residents here will not have private vehicles. We already operate a transit service to Weston Wood Ranch. We serve over 58 teenagers and young adults. And so, this development gives them a chance to rise above and develop their own lives outside of mom and dad's shadows. We have families here in this community who are aging parents and have loved ones that have developmental disabilities. And there is no development of this kind in Walton County, and there's very limited developments comparable in Northwest Florida. So the need is here locally, but also nationally.
So you said teens and young adults. Now, would there be some limit to the age?
Yes, so the residents that live within the community must be 21 years old or older. But we, yes, sir, but in our program, we provide three different therapeutic programs at Weston Wood Ranch currently, and it's a life skills program and a job training program, and then we provide equine therapy services.
Okay, so you said they must be over 21, so is there a limit to how old they can be? And where would, where would they go to after?
No, this is more of a permanent housing for them, yes, sir. This will be a situation, and I say unfortunately because, you know, this won't scratch a dent into the overall community need for housing with persons with disabilities. But, yes, we anticipate that the resident turnover will, you know, it's. you know, essentially, they'll be aging in place.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll be happy to answer any other questions.
I don't think we have any at this time.
Thank you.
I will open up for public comment. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on the Weston Wood Ranch Expansion? Please come to the microphone. State your name and spell your last name.
My name is Mel Parsons, P-A-R-S-O-N-S. My property is directly behind the proposed stuff. My concern is, I think it's a great idea. Don't get me wrong. I have... There's a lot of woods on their property. When I've got horses on the fence line, and they have horses there too, so I would assume that they would no... Not to put hands over the fence. I don't need any liability on my part if somebody... If they clear up to the fence, people putting their hands over and trying to pet my horses. Not that my horses would bite, but you never know. I just want... Would like to see the woods stay there.
A buffer.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
We can ask the developer to respect that?
Yeah. But that was about it, I guess.
Okay.
This is all news.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any comments from the public? All right, seeing none, we will close the public comment. Can we address that?
So the distances from the nearest building to the closest property line, the east setback is approximately 595 feet. I don't know which property the public comment was... I'm sorry? The north. So the northern property line, it... Let's see here. It's 432 feet south from this property line. And so this one was taken as the most conservative as the rear setback. So the northern is greater than this 432, if that makes any sense. So I don't have the northern setback shown on the site data table because the southern one controls. But that being said, the existing vegetation here is all going to remain intact during development. We have a wetland system here and a wetland system here that is protected by a 25-foot buffer. There's also a flood zone here that we are avoiding just due to compensatory...
Compensatory.
But storage requirements. And so we're trying to stay every... You know, we're not avoiding any kind of existing trees or any vegetation that we have to. Like I said, from this property to the east, we have about 600 feet. To the north, it's 400 plus.
So that... So we could assume that maybe 200 feet of that 400 feet would remain in vegetation?
Correct. I would even go further.
It won't be cleared all the way to the fence line?
Yep.
Okay.
And that's why we don't show landscape buffers on this site plan.
Because it's so far.
It's so far, and there's so much vegetation to the property line that there wasn't.
And where would the horses be kept?
The horses on this property?
Yes.
Where they are kept right now. So there's no stables proposed with this development. The horse stables are part of the existing development.
Oh, that's a...
And the fence that's getting...
I'm sorry, I missed that.
Yeah, modified is going to get repaired and...
So are the residents going to be supervised so that there would be no concern about what she's saying? Or, you know?
Yes.
Directly, okay.
There will be supervision on the property.
Okay, so that should address her concern.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other additional comments? All right, I see none, so we'll close the public comment period. You know, to me, this is an expansion of something that's already there. I totally agree with the property owner that there is a need for this. I have two friends that have developmentally disabled adult children that, you know, currently live with their parents, but, you know, someday their parents may not be here. And these kids cannot live by themselves. So something like this is very needed in our area. So I really like this. And it's just an expansion on an approved use that was already approved. Any other comments from the commission? None, I'd entertain a motion.
I move that we accept the project.
Second.
All those in favor signify by aye. Aye. Opposed? Absentions? Motion carries.
Thank you to the owner.[1765.04]